Hey, good morning Eastern Oregon and welcome to this October 21st version of AM Live on EO Alive TV, your digital TV station here in Eastern Oregon. Glad that you're here with us. Here in just a little bit, we're going to have Union County Commissioner Matt Scarfo will be with us. Always a fun conversation. How are you, man?
You skipped something.
I'm working on our slogans rather than your connection to Eastern Oregon, something that defines us a little bit more.
But usually you go to.
Did I go?
We'll put a QR code up on the screen.
Oh yeah, I did. I skipped that.
So Ben, put the QR code on the screen.
Yeah, if you want to know where our content is.
There you go.
There it is. At eoa.network. Yeah. If you're feeling compassionate, you can, there's a place where you can tip us, chip in towards the, towards the expenses of us bringing this kind of stuff to you. So, yeah. How are you?
It's second Monday. We made it through the first Monday.
Yeah.
Barely, barely.
Yeah, so.
Another busy week on the home front.
Yeah, how was the weekend and stuff for you?
It was good. I went and shot a sixth grade football game, which I put, you can find some of those pictures on our Facebook. And then after that, I went up and took some pictures of a family, you know, just friends, just trying it out. And it was a mess. I'm not good at it. I mean, Benny thought some of the pictures were good, but I was just like, it's not really my thing.
Yeah.
I just wanted to try it to see if.
Were they, people doing, what were they doing?
Just, just standing there.
Just standing there, like a family or something?
Yeah, 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 yeah. I just wanted to try it out.
It's not difficult.
Which, I don't think it's difficult. I think it's.
The managing people part of it.
Little rat kids that don't listen. And they can hear that. I don't care.
Well.
They're my friend. You know what I mean? I just wanted to try it out.
Whenever I take pictures of professionals, I tell them, especially like physicians and doctors, I tell them like, yeah, taking a picture of a doctor is like taking a picture of a toddler. You got about 10 minutes and then it's over.
And that's what the part that I don't like. I love kids. Don't get me wrong.
No.
But I don't want to, I don't want to have to manage kids. Like I'm done with that. Like, so it's like, then you got, you know, it's just tedious posing people when I can go to a game and they just do it all for me. And all I do is just point the camera and.
Nope. I'm totally, I'm totally with you. That's why that.
And light outdoors, when you're trying to position people, you know, like if I'm shooting sports, I just have to deal with the light however it hits. Here, I'm like worried about, you know, and it's just not, not really my thing. And I just wanted to try it out one time. So I told them, let's do it. And, and it's not something I think I'm going to do regularly.
They probably really appreciate it though. Cause families are, I mean, those, it is so much work to get everybody dressed and everybody somewhere. So then any pictures at all.
Yeah. And they hadn't had family pictures in a while. And I mean, they will appreciate it in the end. Like I've got some good pictures. Don't get me wrong, but like it's not my, my cup of tea. It's not going to be something that I be like, hey, I'll, I'll take your pictures for, you know.
What do they call that? Lifestyle photography or something? I don't know the title.
Family portrait photography?
Family portrait, yeah. But yeah, it's not, I mean, people make it look really good and it is good. But it's, if you get a beautiful family in a field somewhere and the sun is about ready to go down, pretty much any picture you take is going to look really nice.
Well, we were in the mountains. So, well, we went up Mira. So the light was really weird. You know what I mean? Cause you got all the trees.
You got all the shadows.
And we're like four, we were right after the football game. And so it was just, it was like, it was weird. Yeah. It was weird lighting. But it turned out okay. There was, there's a handful that where all, everybody's looking at the camera and there's not a kid picking their nose.
Yeah, that's the other thing. It's like you just, you take a ton of pictures hoping that you have a couple that are, everybody's looking at the camera.
I definitely took a ton of pictures. Yeah. It's crazy. It's crazy.
Yeah, we had a train derailment. You heard about that?
I did.
Yeah. Thankfully, it turned out was not very exciting at all.
I was on a train that derailed once.
You told me that.
When I was a kid.
Yeah.
From Lompoc to, from San Diego to Lompoc.
Well, and derailment, I mean that in your, in people's minds, they always think of like a whole bunch of cars, a whole bunch of cars piled up, you know, and stuff and.
This was sulfuric acid that derailed in LeGrand.
Well, I heard that it was like, yeah, it's, it's not the kind of stuff you want to spill or burn.
No, sulfuric acid would probably hurt you.
It ended up that, you know, the car just kind of tipped off the track. So it wasn't, but I was, it was kind of, I was, I was going to one of Mavericks' flag football games on Saturday morning and all of those intersections were closed, which was strange.
So you gotta go to the underpass or the overpass.
Yeah. And then about that same time, we got a press release from Union County talking about.
Yeah. And they closed the, the roads, but leave the railroad open. That's crazy to me. Like they closed roads that weren't even that close to it, but there were still rail.
Well, yeah, but you know what that is. Money, man. Railroad, the railroad has to keep going. You know, that's their, their first priority is like, it's, it's like, it's like a, you know, closing the interstate. It's like first priority is getting it cleared off so that it can get opened back up. So anyhow, hey, well, you want to do sports?
Let's do it.
All right.
Got a long one today. AM Sports Report brought to you by Hobby Habit in LeGrand. Why settle for chocolate when you can have an advent calendar full of Legos? Lego's unique advent calendars feature a new mini build every day in the run-up to Christmas. With calendars available and a wide variety of different Lego themes and interests, there's something for everyone. Hobby Habit, 411 First Street in LeGrand, just for the fun of it. We're going to kick it off with LHS football today. They went on the road, dropped a tough one to Cascade, who's arguably the best team in the state, 51 to 7. It's rough. It's a non-league game, so it doesn't affect the GOL at all. It does affect, affect the rankings for LeGrand, but thankfully Cascade was, I think either one or two in the OSAA rankings. So it didn't drop us too much. I think we might've went, I think we're right in the nine area right now. They go to the Dals on Friday, the Tigers, for a 7:00 PM kickoff against the Riverhawks. Pendleton dominated the Dals this last Friday, 35 to 13. The score is, it's not, it wasn't that close of a game. It wasn't like a two-score game. It was more like a three or four-score game, but it ended up being 35 to 13, which I guess is a three-score game. But it didn't seem like it, it seemed kind of like a blowout to me. The Bucks host Ontario this Friday at 7:00 PM and that'll be livestreamed right here on EO Alive. 7 o'clock, tune in. You can check it out. We got two weeks of high school football left, regular season, and then we're done on Halloween is our last livestream of the year unless some team, one of the teams makes the playoff, has home games and picks us up. It's Pendleton's homecoming, so it's a big game for the Bucks. And I mean, I think it's going to be a setup. I think Pendleton probably dominates that game and it's going to set everything up for Pendleton and LeGrand on Halloween, right here in LeGrand. And that's going, I mean, even though Pendleton started the season 0-6, doesn't mean they aren't going to play us tough because they always do. Baker went on the road and came back to beat Ontario 34 to 22 in a game that was much closer than what the score looked. At one point in the fourth quarter, it was 22 to 21 Ontario. And I thought Ontario was going to squeak out their first win of the year, but Baker ended up getting that one. The Bulldogs go to Malala this Friday with that game kicking off at 7:00 PM. The GOL is basically up for grabs. I mean, it really is. It's, it's, you know, everybody in the GOL has a win except for Ontario, even the Dals. And LeGrand is still undefeated in the GOL. So LeGrand's going to look to, to close that GOL schedule out with, you know, the Dals and then Pendleton on Halloween. And we could win the GOL is what I'm saying. And I did not predict that at the beginning of the year. It's, it's a very nice surprise. In football around the valley, Emblor beat Cove 50 to 12 on Friday night. Elgin had a bye. Union beat Crane 42 to 24 and Powder beat Pine Eagle 34 to nothing. LHS volleyball had a huge five-set victory over Baker last Thursday night. Exactly the same thing that happened in Baker, except for Baker won in five sets. They're, they're, they're the two and three team in the GOL. Pendleton's running away with it, but it's, every time they meet over the last few years, it's been a battle and it's really nice to see this LeGrand team competing, you know, at volleyball. We've had, there was a couple of years where it was kind of rough and they're back in the swing of it. This team this year is the best team I've seen in, in a few years for sure. They go to Ontario on Thursday and that game starts at 6:30. The girls soccer team lost to three to two to Malala on Thursday. They head to Baker today for a GOL match that kicks off at four, while the boys go to Baker as well with that game kicking off at six. EOU football, this is, this is such a good surprise. They went on the road and beat Southern 21 to 7. The defense showed that if you can get some help, they can shut teams down. And I mean, I've been a firm believer of that all year. This EOU defense is stifling, but if they're on the field the whole game, it's really hard to stop teams. And you saw it this last Saturday down in Ashland when, I mean, EOU basically dominated that game 21 to 7. Ethan Cutler, the kicker, was named the Frontier Conference Special Teams Player of the Week for his kicking efforts. The Mounties are three and three overall, two and O in the Frontier Conference, and host rival and number 16 in the nation, College of Idaho, this Saturday at 1:00 PM. Will definitely be a physical, in-your-face game. It always is. And the Mounties look to get revenge from a 21 to 17 non-conference loss earlier in the season against the Yotes. Right now, the Mounties are in first place in the Frontier. And if you would've asked me if after two games, the Mounties are in first place, two conference games, at the beginning of the season, I would've said no. But I mean, I've always been a believer in the defense. I was just kind of like, you know, on the, on the edge about the offense. And it seems like this, this team's starting to find its groove. And it, you know, they might, they might have a chance at a Frontier Conference title. EOU volleyball lost their first game of the season on Friday in Salem, the number eight Corbin. The Mounties' win streak was snapped at 20 after the Warriors took the match three sets to one. The Mounties turned around and buried number 23 Bushnell on Saturday night in straight sets, 25 to 12, 25 to 16, and 25 to 18. They're at home this weekend versus OIT and Southern. They play OIT Friday night at 6:00, Southern Saturday at 4:00. Get up there and support them. They're still going to be the number one team in the nation, no doubt. I mean, there, there's nobody even close to them. But it's, it's funny. That was EOU's first loss to Corbin, who's the number two team in the, in the conference over the last 10 years. You know, we've just switched back and forth with them. But that was EOU's first loss to Corbin since 2022.
Wow.
And I was like trying to like think about that and grasp that, how fast time has gone. Cause it feels like just yesterday that they were battling and lost to Corbin in, you know, in the conference tournament, but that was 2022. I usually talk to Coach Kaki after the game and I did, I didn't even get a message from her until today. So you know, like losing that Corbin game, she was pissed. So it takes a little bit of time to, to let that burn off before she's ready to talk about volleyball. But, and I get it a hundred percent. Like I told, I just think that this is fuel for the fire. Like you have to lose. I don't, I'm not a fan of going into a national tournament undefeated. It's too, too much pressure, too big of a target. And I was like thinking to myself, why not let Corbin be the fire? I mean, that's our nemesis in volleyball and, and we want to beat them every time. And we lost, so that'll get you some good, some good fuel for sure. EOU men's soccer beat OIT and Southern this weekend here in LeGrand to remain undefeated. Another one where, yeah, they won the conference tournament last year. If you would've asked me if this far along in the season, if EOU men's soccer is undefeated, I would've said no. They're not just undefeated in the CCC. They're undefeated overall. Yeah, they, they have a few ties, but man, it's crazy. This EOU men's soccer team, I knew it was good. Don't get me wrong. I mean, they won the tournament last year, but I didn't know it was as good as it is. And they're playing at a top level. They're going to make some national noise. When the last poll came out, they finally got some votes. So they're receiving votes. And I would not be surprised if when the next poll comes out, they crack the top 25. I think every undefeated team at this point in the season should be in the top 25. That's my own personal, you know, belief on that. But Henry Lopez was named the CCC Offensive Player of the Week. Lopez scored the only goal of the game in the 1-0 win over Southern on Saturday. They host University of Providence on Friday, 6:30, right up here at Community Stadium. EOU women's soccer put together a pair of two to one victories over OIT and Southern at home this weekend as well. EOU player, Peyton Jackaway was named the CCC Offensive Player of the Week. She had three goals and three assists, which is a six-point weekend, which is over two games. That's huge. I mean, you're, that's, that's all of EOU's goals she was, you know, accounted for in some way, shape or form. They also host University of Providence on Friday with that game kicking off at four. And finally, EOU men's and women's cross-country had a historical team weekend at the Georgia Oja Invite at Oak Knoll Golf Course. Leading the charge was Riley Morris, who came within 1.8 seconds of breaking the all-time EOU 6K record set by Carly Coffey. And she finished in an outstanding 21 minutes, 30.8 seconds. Right behind her, Kalia Hines had the third fastest 6K in EOU history. And Kaia Carlson, these are all local people. Burns, Cove, LeGrand are those three people right there. Kaia Carlson, Maddie Woodbury, Taylor Reddick, all added their names to the record books too, running the eighth, 10th, and 11th fastest times in EOU history respectively. The women finished seventh with 242 points and were the top NAIA team in the field. As for the men, Thomas Ogden, once again, led the way. He was the NAIA National Runner of the Week, not this week, but the week before. He posted a time of 24 minutes, 7 seconds, the fourth fastest 8K in school history. Grady Greenwood was close behind. Trevor Nichols, James Statcher, and the top, and then to round out the top five, Hunter Marlat. The Mountaineers claimed the, the top NAIA team of the race on the men's side as well. Here's the cool part. They go right back to that same course on November 9th for the CCC championships. And I mean, just mentally, that's a win right there. Cause you're going right back to the place where you just had a historical weekend. And, and I mean, that's nothing but good for these nationally ranked cross-country teams. AM Sports Report brought to you by Hobby Habit, just for the fun of it.
You're right. That was long, man.
Yeah, a lot of stuff. A little busy weekend.
Yeah, yep. No, a lot of, a lot of good news. All right. Well, hey, let's take a look outside. Got one of those fall days. It's just, the leaves are starting to fall. And let's look at that weather Bennett, that graphic. So 64, 37 tonight. There was frost on the, when I drove in, there's frost on windshield of the car.
I saw that when I took the garbage out this morning.
Yeah. And yep. So were they here? Friday, I guess that's kind of, like, looks like this is kind of the weather we got for a bit. So sunshine today and tomorrow and Thursday. I love those warmer afternoons in the middle of the fall. So, all right, cool. Well, hey, thank you guys for being with us here. We'll take a quick break and we'll, we'll be right back with Union County Commissioner Matt Scarfo.
Eastern Oregon is full of interesting people with interesting minds and interesting things to say. Here at EO Alive, we're committed to connecting you to these intriguing people with EO Talks. We let our special guests share their ideas and life experiences with deep, open, engaging, and inquisitive conversations. You'll also be informed in depth on some of the most recent and relevant events, issues, and more. EO Talks on EO Alive, your connection to Eastern Oregon, now on Roku.
All right, we're back. Union County Commissioner Matt Scarfo. How are you, man?
I'm well. How are you guys doing?
Good.
Good.
Another day.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Yeah. You're always, you're always smiling.
Hey, good.
Yeah.
Which is like. I don't like to not smile. That's not, that means it's not a good day.
Well, and I mean, I know they're, I mean, I've seen you tense and seen you not smiling, but, but generally you are like, even with a smile, you go like, yeah, it's one of those days.
Yeah, even when it is a bad day, I'm just like, yeah, this is fun.
We saw some of that during COVID.
Oh my gosh, yeah, yeah. Hey, I was going to, on Doddsy's, was that an 8K in 24 minutes?
Yeah.
They're just sprinting that, aren't they?
What does that say? 6K?
No, the men run an 8K.
Well, but the record.
The men run an 8K.
I'm just doing the math, I'm trying to do the math on the 24 minutes. That is.
Yeah. Benny would know better than, than me. He's a cross-country runner, but.
That's just super, that's.
Yeah.
Here, yeah, yeah.
That's like an hour for me.
Yes. 8K in 24 minutes, 18 seconds. It's the eighth best time ever at EOU.
That's fast.
Yeah. I haven't ran, I mean, I haven't ran 8K in, in the last three months, three years, 30 years.
I never, I wasn't never good at long distance. I was, I'm a sprinter. I don't have the long, and so that long distance stuff just impresses me. That is.
When I was in, when I was down in California in college, we pitchers had to run three, three miles every, three days a week. And dude, it was brutal. I hated it.
Yeah. Oh, well, you always just, oh, run 500 poles. Like every pitcher was just, and I was in there just like hitting heavy weights and doing, and all the pitchers are doing stretches.
Yeah, Jobes is what it's called.
Jobes, yeah. All the weird, they're just over there just.
Lightweight.
Yeah, one pound stuff and there's, you know, all the chicks are checking me out, just bench pressing and these, all these pitchers over there just going like.
I did, I lifted in college on my own though, like, cause I didn't want to just do those little Jobes, you know, like.
Jobes, is that what they're called?
Jobes, yeah. I'm sure there's an acronym for it, but I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't know what, I don't remember, but I do remember doing jobs, lots of them. But then the running. We had, we had a pitching coach who was a double A pitcher and for the Angels. And he had season-ending surgery, so he came back to coach us. And, and he would ride a golf cart. This was in, you know, Riverside, California. And he would ride a golf cart and we'd run our three-mile loop and he'd follow us in the golf cart to make sure that we're, yeah, every, three days a week, dude. It was brutal.
That's smart.
So what's the benefit of a pitcher running?
Yeah, it's a long.
Endurance, especially starters.
Cause they, they, somebody, I mean, nine innings and you throw 100 and some on pitchers.
I think I threw regularly over 100.
Because it's a, it's a pitcher and the catcher that are doing the 90% of the work. When you're in the outfield, I mean, there's, I've had games where I've never even got a ball hit to me in a full game. And so I'm just running out to the field and running back. I mean, and you go, and you go to bat and you just want, you know, speed and strength with, with that. So, no, you got to be in good shape, but.
Your core is the most important thing as a pitcher. And so you don't do heavy weights because heavy weights bulks you up and makes things tight. You want to be long and loose as a pitcher. That's the, that's, that's how they say, you know.
I hate to bring this up, we're talking baseball, but ah, the Mariners.
They were close. I didn't watch that last, I mean, I missed the last part of that game last night.
I predicted it after game five, not to pat my own back, but I said, if they don't win game six, they're not winning game seven.
Well, I, I thought the Blue Jays are supposed to blow them out anyway.
Yeah.
And for it to go to game seven.
They've blown everybody else out.
Yeah. But for them to go to game seven, hey, good job Mariners. And hey, thank you for, I mean, that was entertaining. Well, the last game of the, I mean, the 15 inning game was just awesome to watch too.
It was crazy. It blew everybody's pitching staff out the way.
Yeah. Well, when you go 15 innings, it's like, who else we got? Like, shortstop.
Where's the equipment manager? Put a hat on that. He can throw a nasty nuck. Let's get him out there.
Put the starter back in, you know, get some rest, but.
It's gonna, it's gonna be a really good World Series though. I mean, yeah, I really do.
The Dodgers are good.
The Dodgers are good, but the Blue Jays are not going to just fold. I don't think.
What I've been watching with the Blue Jays is when they get hot, they, they remind me of like how LC State plays is nothing, nothing, nothing. Then all of a sudden 15 runs.
It's almost like that team, the last Blue Jays team that won the World Series, the Joe Carter team. They just pound teams when they're on, when they're on. And then, you know, it's.
The one thing that made me upset a little bit was the, the way we play baseball now, it, you know, it used to be like get on first, get them to second, bun them over to third, and then, and you know, sack fly in. And I don't like that, that one, the last game.
That's if you play small ball.
Yeah. But there was times where small ball needed to be played in the series. And I'd sit there and scream at the TV saying, why aren't you squaring around a bun right now?
Because the, the, the numbers say that you have a better chance, you score more runs over time if you let your guys who hit home runs swing instead of bunting.
So the whole lineup is home run hitters.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
So it's all like from first to nine, they all hit home runs and it's, it's a different game.
It's a way different game. And the Dodgers, I read an article yesterday about the Dodgers and they, they, they said the Dodgers might have it figured out. They had like six of the best pitcher, starting pitchers in baseball. They were all on injured, none of them have even thrown 100 innings this year. And they're coming into the World Series, you know what I mean? That might be it. You just hold them off. Try to win early in the season and then bring them on, you know, late.
His first game this season is the World Series, like type thing, just.
Really?
No, 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 no. That's what they're saying is like the, yeah, like throw them like 50 innings during the regular, you have to qualify. You have to play a certain amount of innings, but that might be the, I mean, most teams can't do that because they don't have the offense or the other pitchers, but the Dodgers.
You got a fresh arm. There's no charts on them. They don't know where it is. Yeah, it's just like.
Might be the way, man.
We've never seen this guy pitch before.
I mean, I'd hate to have to face the, the Dodgers' starting pitchers. That's a nasty, I mean, Blake Snell, Yamamoto, Otani, just those three alone, you're like.
Walk, walk.
And Otani had the greatest game in history.
Yeah.
The other day. He threw six innings, 10 strikeouts, no runs, and hit three bombs in the same game.
Who does that?
Him.
Yeah. That's just like the perfect, the perfect player.
Dude, he really is.
Yeah. But no, World Series, when does it start anyway? I haven't even heard. Sorry, I'm not gonna, I'm sorry for taking over the show.
No, no, it's, it's good. I, yeah, it's fine.
World Series schedule?
I'm not putting off.
It starts Friday, Friday night at 5:00 in Toronto. So Toronto, Toronto has home field advantage, which is crazy.
It always bleeds into Halloween and stuff. So we'll see. I'm excited.
The boys of September become the men of October.
Yeah. Well, hey, let's talk county business.
Do we have to?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Cause I could talk, cause we just, I just played baseball. We had homecoming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you bring us any outhouses?
Yes, I did.
You did.
Okay, let's, let's get to it. There we go. I brought, I brought gifts.
Yeah.
There you are.
What is it? outhouses?
Union County Fairgrounds.
Where'd you get those?
So I had them made, so you know, we did receive the, or we didn't receive it yet, but we were getting the $2.5 million spring, spring of '27. So I really wanted to do a, you know, a kind of a pain in the butt in, in the Capitol, everybody. And I really wanted to say, you know, thank you for this gift to all legislators. And, and so I have the fair board do a, take a picture and then write up a, you know, you know, thank you very much is where the money's going and we appreciate you and all that. And I said, well, I need a little, I was like, I want a little something else. And, and I had a buddy, Commissioner in Jefferson County, he does embroidery and some stuff.
I know, I know him.
Oh yeah, yeah. Kelly Simley, and a great, great guy. And he's like, well, I could get some t-shirts made and we could put them in a like origami thing in the shape of a toilet. I'm like, oh yeah, that'd be, that'd be, because I want to keep the cost low. And it's like, oh, that'd be great. But if you take, if you take it out, then it's no longer the toilet anymore. It's just a t-shirt.
Right, yeah.
And so Representative Owens, he always has the stress stuff in different shapes and things.
Well, that's what this is. This is a stress ball.
You could squeeze the poop out of it.
Could you use it for the Trump video? Could you use it for the Trump video?
I don't know the, anyway, so anyway, so I was like, hey, maybe if I had a little something, and so, anyway, so he said, look up squeeze toys. He has a catalog and all that, and there's some that look like a toilet. And then he sent me that one. I go, that's it. That's it. I go, can you get Union County Fairgrounds and print it on there? And he was like, yeah, no problem. And so when I went around during ledge days last month, and went around and gave everybody in the state legislature a thank you card and a squeezable outhouse. And I said, thanks, and I went to everybody and said, hey, thanks to you, we are probably not gonna have to use those anymore in the fairgrounds. And it was so well-received. Everybody was just, a lot of them, I knew, I knew exactly when you walked in my office what that was, and I just said, hey, well, now you can put it on your desk. And everyone was like, what's the deal with the outhouse? And it's like, oh, my gosh, this guy from Union County was bugging us for a decade.
Right, well, I mean, I'll put it on my, I got, on my desk, I got a place where I collect that kind of-
Yeah, I got, yeah, so every senator, every representative, and everyone that helped also. There were some aides and stuff. And then I even got one on the governor's desk, which, she's in Fort Knox over there now. She's like the fourth floor of the library, and you gotta get, I mean, they weren't, I couldn't even get in the elevator. Someone had to come down in the lobby. It was raining, I'm soaking wet, and it was raining, and here I am, I'm like, can you give like, shake, and I'm like, can you give this to the governor, please? And the guy's like, seriously? And I'm like, don't worry, she'll get it, you know, but-
That's funny.
Yeah.
He's like, I can't, you don't even get to see her if you go over there, like, as a commissioner, like?
Yeah, I get the, by appointment. With the construction going on with the Capitol, she's in the library, so it's a little bit different. But no, it's not like you could just-
Walk in and say, hey.
Walk in and say, hey, how you doing there, Gov?
It's kind of like, she has the whole top floor, and so it's kind of like a penthouse. You can't even, you can't even get up there, yeah.
Yeah, you need a key to, for the elevator and all that. But, I mean, you can walk in and out of the library, no problem.
Right.
But, so, construction, oh, November 14th is groundbreaking, and the fair's fundraiser also, and dinner.
What day is that?
November 14th. It's a Friday. And it's going to be at 4 o'clock. I think we're, you know, the sun goes down super early.
Yeah, because the clocks are already being changed, right?
Yeah, it's, ah, we voted that out.
The ways are still happening.
Yes. Well, it was the same, remember the speed limits? We voted the speed limits out, and it didn't happen for like 10 years. So, I don't know, I was, I was asking, I go, can we do this county by county? You know, Malheur County, they're on mountain time. And it's like, maybe we could just say, hey, Union County, we're not, we're not switching our clocks.
Yeah, Malheur County being on mountain time screws with my brain, too, because sports-wise, like, there's, sometimes they'll have games at mountain, they'll have game, like, it would be nice if we could just use one time for everything, because, you know, just the mess.
But, you know, maybe we could just say, guess what, Union County, we're, we're not-
I mean, you're the, you're a commissioner.
I can't do-
Flex your muscles.
I'm, I'm going to ask, because somebody-
Get out your stick.
Because I was at Rotary the other morning, and someone brought it up in our Rotary, it's like, why haven't, why are we still doing this? Didn't we vote it out?
Yeah.
And so I started, you know, thinking, and I was like, maybe we could do like maybe Eastern Oregon, hey, guess what? 17 counties in Eastern Oregon, we're, you know, we voted it in. We're not, we're not doing it. Anyway, 4 o'clock, November 14th. Yeah.
At the fairgrounds.
At the fairgrounds, well, you know, Senator Nash-
It's a dinner?
Yep, dinner, fundraiser, and there's a dessert auction. So it's, and it all goes to the fair. It's a really great, well-attended event, too. But now that it's going to be groundbreaking, you know, we'll take some pictures.
Who's catering?
Oh, I think it's 4H.
Oh, 4H?
Yeah, I think it's 4H.
They did the fireworks a few years ago, out at Buffalo.
Yep. So, and then hopefully timeline-wise, we, you know, working with Becker Construction, they're fantastic, that we could probably get this project done by fair next year.
Oh, wow.
Which would be just, I'd kind of like to show that when I say, hey, we're shovel-ready, we're ready to go, even though we don't have the money until 27, we're gonna get this done. And been working with Business Oregon and Regional Solutions with the governor's office about, you know, because we won't have 2.5 million, and I don't want Becker Construction to float 2.5 million, so maybe we could budget a little bit and, and maybe get a low-interest rate loan, just to float it until we get the money in spring of 27.
Yeah, because you don't want to ask them to-
No, I don't want to ask anybody. But, I mean, is the money in the bank? Not yet.
It will be.
It will be. And I was really shocked, you'd think that there'd be more programs out there for this, knowing that, you know, lottery bonds aren't sold for a couple of years, that, hey, beret- Yeah, you'd think that there'd be some kind of state, like, hey, we know what's coming, here's a little floater and to get it done. Otherwise, we'd just be, all right, well, waiting for the money, two more years. It's like, no, we're, we're ready. We got, we got the materials ready, Becker Construction's ready, Union County's ready. We're ready, we're ready to see this. And so to go in a little more detail, I know we talked a little bit yesterday, you know, we demolished the one set of bathrooms, we're gonna rebuild those, the bathrooms and showers in the barn, the big barn, redo all that. And we're gonna do another set of bathrooms, and then connect to the 4H building, and just connect to where we're at, all the sinks and stuff. And maybe even another outbuilding, but we're, we're working on that. But, and the RV park is the big one for me. That RV park, I really want to see that bigger and used, because that's revenue for us. And if we could get, if we could take this gift that we got and even generate more with that, I'm all for that.
Now, is the, is the RV park, is that kind of west of the buildings? I'm trying to remember where.
North.
North. It's, it's like in between Mavericks and, on that side.
Yeah.
It's, if, I mean, it's, it's green, it's, it's grass, it's, it's great, you got a great view of Emily. It's, it's not a bad little park.
Yeah.
But there's just no, I don't know if there's even electric hookups, but there will be. We're gonna, I want that to be, I want that to be used, and because I love to see-
There's no reason not to use it, right?
Well, I'd like to see that because of mirror up top with the motorized section right there. So much safer to drop your trailer off at the fairgrounds, and then ride your side-by-side or four-wheeler up than, because hauling a trailer up and down Fox Hill, not, it stinks.
Yeah.
It's not.
I was up there this weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, so that's, that's not a bad plan. You have a little staging area to get stuff up and down.
Yeah, that's, that's where I'd like to see it, see it go. But like, I'm, I'm just liaison to the fair, so there's still the fair board. And then, so there, there's some meetings, and there's some stuff that's gonna, there's gonna take place, and-
So who's doing the, this banquet? The fair board?
So there's the Friends of the Fair.
Okay.
So they're the nonprofit organizations.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not the fair board, it's not like?
No, so there's the fair board, and there's the Friends of the Fair.
Okay.
They're separate, though, right?
Yeah, yeah. And, yeah, it's all the legal, you know, every legality part of it, you need to be a 501(c)(3), so you can get grants and things and some, so kind of everybody has their-
Right, right.
Like, you have the board, and then you have the Friends of the, so you could go out and receive funds.
Grants.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, cool.
So, yeah, those worked out. They were, they were fun.
I'm gonna have you sign this bootlicker before you leave.
Yeah, I'll do it. I'll get a Sharpie.
I got a Sharpie, wait, yeah.
Yeah. Well, so here's, here's a hanging ball for you. So you recently had a Greater Oregon-
Oh, yeah, Greater Idaho.
Greater Idaho, yeah. How'd that last one go?
Well, no one showed up.
Oh, we know.
No one showed, but it's, it's, you know, Mike McCarter from the Greater Idaho Movement, he was there, and it's like, man, like, oh, we struck out, and the, the reps, we struck out in the Senate, we struck out in the, and just like, you know-
What's the point?
How do we get it to stop? How do you get it to stop?
It has to go back on the ballot, and be voted out.
There's a ballot coming out in less than a month.
Somebody has to go get signatures and has to go, but the, so, the thing is, is I, I understand this movement, I get it. We, in Eastern Oregon, you feel it, like, yes, we are separate. We are not that side.
Right.
We are, we are completely different. So I completely understand it. I just don't like the mandate.
Right.
That's the only thing that, that chaps me. I don't, I don't mind having meetings on this. I mean, if, if it does get off the ballot, please come back, let's discuss this more.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with it.
Well, and I was, we talked about this on a show a couple of weeks ago, and it's misinterpreted. People, people generally will say, well, yeah, they voted it in, and so they are pro Greater Idaho Movement. And, and people don't understand that, no, the only thing that was voted on is that you're gonna have quarterly meetings.
Yeah, and conversation.
Conversation, right, yeah.
That's it. Which, that kind of, at the beginning, it made me mad, because they never showed up prior.
Yeah.
It's like, you could, it has to be on the agenda. You could, there's public comment at, you know, at all of our meetings, not our work sessions, but our meetings. So it was never brought up to, to just force us into it. I, that's, the mandate part was not, that didn't set well with me, and then no sunset date.
Well, and the public, they weren't very well-informed either, you know, on, it's like, because they're like, oh, what is it gonna hurt to have a quarterly meeting?
Yeah, and it was, it was all, hey, let's talk about it. Let's open it up and have, have discussion. Which is fine. I don't mind discussion on the, like, trust me, I have discussions on stuff where I do not want to talk about it. But that's my job, that's what I signed up for. But that's, I'm, I've never backed out of any discussion that I'm aware of. I mean, even during COVID, there were some tough ones there.
Yeah.
And I said, yeah, no, I'll talk. That's my job.
Yeah.
Speaking of the ballot, do we not have anything on this ballot?
I think there was a, maybe there's some small stuff in cities, but I don't think there is one.
Not for the county. I heard that like 17 of the 36 counties don't have any. So we might be, because I can't find anything on-
No, I think there's something, I have to talk to Lisa Feek or Clerk about it, but I thought there was something in one of the small cities that is doing something.
Is there?
Yeah. But, yeah, kind of an off-year for us here in Oregon. But, yeah, and then next year is gonna be busy.
Yeah, because next year, there's two county commissioners.
I'm rerunning, and I heard that Corey Miller jumped in for policy.
I don't know who that is. Oh, I do know who that is, Miller Treese.
Yeah, they've been here a while. And, yeah, the governor race, and there's something else. That was big. Well, the governor race.
Well, let's talk about you running, because we, because, and we have talked, so, the public passed term limits, and those were struck down, and you and I, we've all three like, well, what was, how was it struck down? You know, and so, explain to me what, I don't know, kind of, give me your side of the story. Kind of tell me how you got here, yeah.
Well, there, well, it's, it was Douglas County, so there's only a few counties that have voted in term limits for commissioners. And so Douglas County Commissioner Back, I don't know when the date was on that, but she wanted to go to courts to see if it was legal or constitutional, and the judge there in Douglas County deemed it unconstitutional. And which I just found out, because I know we had a little conversation, that when I heard constitutional, I thought the US Constitution, which, come to find out, which is brand-new to me from yesterday, is, it's the, it's not the US Constitution, it's the state constitution, that it is deemed unconstitutional for the state constitution.
And the reason, and I have the, the, the reason, the reason that is, is that the state has essentially said, we're the ones that make the rules. Our constitution is the one that decides term limits for commissioners. Right? Yeah. And so there, so it's, it's, it's more of an authority thing. So if the local, if the local government says, hey, we want to put commissioner, we want to, we want to put term limits on a commissioners, and the state's going, wait a minute, that's our job.
But doesn't that turn into more of a monarchy than a democracy when you start talking like that?
I don't understand. I mean, for me, that, that is-
The people chose the term limits.
No, I know, I know, but the-
That should be how it is in a democracy.
But the people chose the constitution. This, this is changeable. I mean, the, I mean, if you want to, if you want to define it to monarchy, then yeah, federal government has a monarchy over the states.
And the states have a monarchy over the counties.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you want to-
The, the rules trick, yeah.
Right.
The, and we've, we've talked about this before on the shows, but I really wish things were vetted prior to even going on the ballot. Because how many millions upon millions of dollars do we spend on something that should never have been on the ballot in the first place?
Right.
Which a big example is like all the gun bills and stuff. It's like, it should never have been voted on, because now we're in courts, and they're just to find the Supreme Court says, yeah, no, Second Amendment.
Yeah.
And then we spent how much money?
Well, and that, that takes, and it takes so much time for that to play out, you know, I mean, that, that is, I don't know if it's a problem, but that's just the nature of our court stuff, you know? So then if a city passes something that is unconstitutional, that is enforced at the city level for a while until somebody says, I'm gonna challenge that in court, and then it has to make its way all the way up to where somebody says, yeah, that, that can't be enforced because it doesn't fit, you know? So, but, you know, I mean, the, the people of Oregon have the power to change this. I mean, somebody could say, we want to, you know, we want to, we want to change the constitution of Oregon and go through that process of changing it, but-
I'm, with this, it's kind of a, you know, never say never, because weird stuff, weird stuff happens.
Yeah.
Like, I said, you know, COVID happened. My, my first term was COVID.
Yeah.
So it's like my, I, it's like, I didn't know what a commissioner was until my second term.
Yeah.
And, you know, God forbid this happens. I mean, look at the case in Willawa County.
Yeah.
You know, Commissioner Susan Roberts passed, and Commissioner Mike Hayward, that was in there, you know, over 10 years ago, it's like, hey, we need somebody for a year and a half. Do you think you'd come back in? If something happened here, you know, God forbid it happens here, but it's like, hey, Matt, can you come back in? Nope, sorry.
Yeah, you've served the 10 years.
Yeah, no, it's illegal or whatever, yeah. No, stuff happens, and, you know, like, that's, that scenario.
Yeah.
And hopefully, hopefully that scenario does not happen, and I feel bad for Willawa County, and, you know, Commissioner Hayward's back, and now I'm working with him on a lot of things, and he's got a lot of, he's got a lot of input, and he's, and he filled the perfect rate in. And he's doing the job, and there's no learning curve, there's no nothing.
Yeah.
But if, if we had the term limits, that's gone. We, we don't, we don't have that opportunity in case something, something crazy happens.
Yeah. So help people understand the benefits of somebody being a commissioner, the benefits to the county of a commissioner being able to serve for a while.
Oh, historical knowledge is, is up there. The relationships that we create are up there. That's, that's huge, especially with the Capitol, with the state, states. So a lot of legislators, they don't even remember your name until the second term.
Right.
So if we had two term limits, then first term, don't, don't care until you get reelected. Then you get reelected, it's okay. All right, what do you want to work on? And then, oh, that may take six years. Well, I only have four.
Right.
Because everything is, works very slow in our state.
So the experience?
Experience.
The outhouse?
Yes.
So, so, so if you're elected for another term, and you have another issue that you want to take back to the state, they're gonna know you.
Oh, 100%.
Yeah.
100%. I could walk into all their offices, and, you know, a lot of them are like, just don't talk about bathrooms.
Yeah.
So now I get to go in, and now it's like, hey, what's, yeah, what's up next, Matt?
Yeah. So is there anything in particular that's kind of hanging out there that you like, man, I'd really like to work on?
Yeah, well, that residential treatment, we're working on that. And then there's some railroad stuff that, because we have the Willawa Union Railroad Authority, I'm co-chair of that. And we do have some interest in some people hauling freight from Willawa County to the UP line. So I'm looking at maybe getting those tracks at least up to some kind of grade to where we could get a train on it the whole way. Because right now, it's only good from Minham, I'm sorry, Elgin to about Minham. All the rest in like Willawa County needs, needs a lot of work. And if they ever are successful with those, the Snake River dams, then going over rattlesnake grade to the ports over there will be gone, and we'll have to have that railroad up and, you know, up and running, and with freight. So that's another one I'm really looking at, trying to get that back up. And then maybe, because Willawa, the city of Willawa was asking about an excursion train from like maybe Minham to Willawa, and go along the river there, that river corridor. And, you know, we could look at it, and we could do it, but the tracks are just not in, not in good shape, and it's, it's a lot of money.
So you've got some, oh, we have, we have a bunch of questions we need to get to.
No, so the tracks-
Oh, we got some coming in?
Yeah.
Hey, all right.
Yeah, but just real quick, so the, but the track for the excursion that train that is coming out of Elgin.
Yeah.
Where does it go and how is it?
So the excursion crane excursion train goes to Rondawa and back. And that's that's it.
So this.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Goes to Elgin to Rondawa, Rondawa, yeah.
And where's Rondawa? I don't know where that.
It's a confluence of the Grand Ron River and Willaoua. Ron, Grand Ron, Willaoua.
Rondawa, yeah.
Kind of did a.
Yeah.
So there's a couple of questions from this, this one, this main question from John Anderson. That he wants to know, how much did the monthly salary of seven thousand three hundred and fifty-one a month and seven hundred and fifty-three dollars a month plus family health insurance of two thousand four hundred and twenty-three monthly for three hundred and forty-six dollars monthly contribute to your influence to file for a third term in spite of sixty-eight point two one percent of voters and and a county ordinance establishing the term limits eight years ago?
So is my salary influencing my job?
Yeah.
I mean, there's days where I'm like, I don't need to get paid for this. And there's days that I'm not getting paid enough. So would I do this job for free? No. I get yelled at way too much for doing this job for free. And being away from my my family and stuff, going on the work. No, I think it needs to be compensated for sure. I mean, this is not a volunteer job. But it was in the back of my head, if I don't have this job, I'm okay. I got the restaurants and I got the things and stuff, but no, yeah.
Well, and there's a cost from your, and I asked you this question yesterday, and that is, is there a cost to your businesses?
Oh, yes.
For you being running, for you, yeah.
Yeah, so that's the other thing. It's costing me, yeah, it's costing me money to be a county commissioner. So, yeah, I have to, I have two managers now and somebody to do my books. I mean, and pretty much I had to have three people do what I did, running my, running my restaurants.
Yeah.
So the he, and then the the second part of the question is, in spite of sixty-eight percent of the voters voting for term limits in Union County. This person also said, and I don't know if this is true or not, but that in Douglas County, it was at, it was actually shot down in court and then she sued the county.
Oh, really?
The commissioner, yes.
I don't know the details on that. That's lawyer, like.
Yeah, five thousand five hundred and seventy-eight voters in Union County voted for term limits. And then Commissioner Morgan in Douglas, Douglas County filed and then was denied and then personally sued her own county, is what this is. I mean, I don't know, this is just coming from a viewer.
Aspect of all this, I don't.
I guess, I guess I don't, the number of percentage, the percentage of voters that might have voted it through, if it's not legal, then I don't know that it's relevant.
Well, this, I mean, he's personally asking Matt.
No, that's fine, yeah. But it comes to the legal aspect and the the process and the.
Right, but the question is, is the question is, how do you, how do you feel about, you know, how?
That many voters voting for it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, it's, being in my position, it's like, okay, yes, I care what Union County wants.
Right.
But then I also took an oath to the United States Constitution and the state constitution. So that's where I really, I go back to, we need to vet this stuff prior, so they don't put me in a position where we're going against what Union County wants. I go, but if it's unconstitutional, it's unconstitutional.
Yeah.
Period. So, but it's not, this was not my decision. This is not my, I just said, I'd like to run again.
Right.
And I'm, you know, I'm in my prime. I'm ready. I'm, I'm not, I'm not tired. I'm not, I'm ready to go. And I, like I said, I got everyone's cell phone number in my back pocket.
So let me ask you another question. So when, when do you think that, I mean, looking down the road, looking at other commissioners that you have, that you rub shoulders with and stuff, when, when is a good time? What are some of the signs that they really need to move on?
So there was a commissioner down in Lake County, when I first got in, he was fantastic. And he was in for twenty years. And I was at dinner with him in Eugene one night and I said, man, you're, you're so good at this and everyone respects you and everyone and you and you speak well and you're and you're, you're moving the needle on certain things. I said, why, why not another term? He goes, Matt, after twenty years, you're gonna vote enough that you're gonna piss everybody off?
You're gonna vote enough.
You're gonna vote enough ways that you're gonna piss everybody off.
Yeah.
Cause you're, everyone's not gonna like every single vote you make.
Right, right, right.
And he goes, goes, I've, I've voted enough.
I've reached that.
I've reached that point to where I've, I've made everybody in my my community mad.
So, yeah, it's kind of like that, kind of like the the definition of a good compromise is is that nobody's happy with the decision.
Yeah, so, so if you put that in terms of getting voted in or not.
Yeah.
After a while, I'd, you know, probably be like, Matt, you, I don't like you, what you did on that land deal. I don't like what you did with the roads or I don't.
Yeah.
You know, sooner or later, the, my constituents would be like, Matt, I think it's time for you to leave.
Well, and I.
So for, if you're looking for like a, like what is a, what, um, how many terms is?
No, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm just looking.
That's a, that's a tough question.
For, yeah, I'm looking for why the, you know, the reason that Union County voted that in was because there was some, they felt like it was necessary. And I, why did they? And I I wasn't aware enough of what was going on.
I've heard stories on on why and I don't know if they're true or not, but I heard that there is a couple of people in this community that didn't like who was in and they couldn't get them out.
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna find out when it comes vote time. I mean, that's, that the proof's gonna be in the pudding. If people, if sixty-eight point two one percent don't believe in term limits, then.
Well, the thing is, it's done. That's mute. It's already, it's done.
Yeah, I know, but they're still gonna, they can exercise it and not vote for you, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I guess they could.
So we'll find out. You know what I mean? We'll see. And that'll, that'll be the one way to tell if people were serious.
So I'll be, I'll be the sacrificial lamb. Wonderful. Well, yeah, no, let's get rid of the guy that's doing well for our county, yeah.
I have a sense that.
Just because of that? Yeah, no, it's a, but it's gone forever, but, oh, I felt bad for Matt and boy, he got us all that money and he did all his great stuff.
Yeah, I have a sense that you're not gonna have a problem, but.
Well, no, they're like, oh, well, the thing is, Dottie, I ran into one person that was like, you know, hey, you know, you know, we should have had the term limits, but everybody else has been, no, we're, I mean, I have not had anybody say this is a bad thing for us.
For you to run again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've had law, I mean, everybody's just, I, someone sent me a thank you note, like, yes, let's, you know.
Well, and you know, it's what, what, I mean, I could have been one of those people that voted for term limits back when it, you know, just cause I was unaware that, I mean, and I just was unaware that you, in any organization, the longer you serve, the more, especially as a commissioner, you take leadership positions on different committees and stuff, you know, and that, those leadership positions allow you to benefit and to influence decisions that benefit Union County.
So, I mean, why are there not term limits on sheriffs?
Yeah.
Or DAs?
Right.
City councils?
Right.
I mean, like, why was it specifically for commissioners?
Right.
What, what good is that going to do for our county?
It had to have been pointed at particular individuals.
That's what the storyline goes, is it was like, I don't like this person or something.
Yeah.
Well, cause I, trust me, I don't want to be in her thirty years, twenty years, that's, wow, I'm, no, but right now I, I got good momentum going and I I would love another four years.
Yeah.
And then if, if I don't get in, and Paul's not, not in, Jake's gonna be our seniority in there.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's.
He's doing a fantastic job, don't get me wrong, but.
With term limits, though, with three commissioners, you're always gonna, if there is term limits, you're always gonna have a person on their first term, just finishing their first term.
About every eight years, yeah.
Seniority, yeah, yeah, having seniority.
Every eight years, we're gonna have, we're gonna go back to a. Yep, which kind of puts you back into, cause like I said, no one tries to remember your, or no one remembers your name until your second term.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we lose four years there.
Well, any, what else is on your agenda out there? What, what else is, anything that we've been talking about currently that's going on?
Well, depending on, well, I'll, I'll hold off on that one.
We're not ready for it yet. It's confidential.
No, you know, the railroad, the residential treatment.
I wanna know more about residential treatment. What's holding it up? We have the money.
No, we don't.
Oh, the money's ho.
Yeah, so the governor.
The money is ours, though.
No, we don't have, we, well, remember, we're trying to get fifteen million.
I thought we got it.
No.
So what do we, that's what we're waiting on?
So the governor, it's the Barb Cedar, our interim Behavioral Health Director, mentioned that it's, we'll find out here at the end of this month. I think the twenty-seventh, twenty.
See, I thought we already.
No, no, we don't have it. We're ready to go. Like I said, we're, we're, we're day near shovel ready.
That needs to happen.
Oh, a hundred percent. And so the governor was asking for ninety million. She ended up getting sixty-five million. And then they were going to decide on how to spend this sixty-five million. And they really wanted a location in Eastern Oregon and we were like the top of the list. And then.
You'd think.
Yes, you'd think. And then, excuse me, the last I heard was they want to use it all for Metro. And, but it's, you know, there's still a chance that we could get some, but the thing is that I struggle with this a little bit, is if we receive this type of funding for this, it becomes almost like a state residential treatment. So they could bring people from Portland, Salem.
Yeah, we don't, that's not what we need here.
And, you know.
Kind of like Baker House.
Yes, if people need treatment, I'm all for it, but we need, we need beds here.
Yeah.
And if it's filled up with everybody from Portland, not saying they're gonna stay here, but, you know, I don't want them to start flooding us and then they stay here.
That's ninety percent of Baker Houses, is people from the west side.
Yes, so there, there's some funding where it is earmarked, yes, this is a state facility and we'll, we'll send people over from Portland or whatever. And it's like, we, I think we could fill, fill our beds.
Just from people here?
Just from people here.
Or just Eastern Oregon?
Yes.
John Anderson says, thank you for answering the questions.
Nine six three one zero zero one, mscarfo@union-county.org.
There you go.
Yeah, moist, not afraid of that. I don't ever, please, give me a call, give me, give me buzz.
Is there people, do you think there's people in Union County that are anti having a drug treatment facility here? I do.
I would say there's people that are worried of, you know, the old, if you build it, they will come.
Yeah, for sure.
But it's, you know, when I look at it, if you look at what's happening to our hospital and what's happening to our jail and they're getting flooded with, where they shouldn't be at either one of them and they need special treatment on this stuff.
And people don't know that, though.
We're past the point of no return with it. It's like, you have to look outside of the box and we have to have a residential treatment center here. We do. It's affecting too much other stuff.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm learning this too. Like, if I wasn't in this position, I'd be like, what? No, I don't, we don't want this here and but.
Which I think there's a lot of people like that.
Well, they're, they just, they're, they just don't understand what's hap, and I guarantee we get the sheriff, we get Jeremy Davis, I mean, we could get, and just say, hey, you don't understand what's happening to our, our hospitals, our beds there are being used for mental treatment, our jails are being used for mental treatment and they're, that's what, they're not for, they're not for that.
Right.
And it's sad that, you know, yeah, we have, we have behavioral and mental issues everywhere.
Yeah.
And we have no place for these individuals to go.
Well, and neither one of those solutions are really fixing, they're not, they're not appropriate. They're not an appropriate.
They're doing, hey, they're doing the best they can.
Right.
But yes, we need something more acute to that, to their special needs.
Yep.
And I, I think every community should probably have one.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we don't, you know, we got rid of this, the the big state ones and, but now it's like, all right, there's funding for smaller ones and
Yeah.
So, yes, I'll, I will be continuing to, to work on that.
Yeah.
And you're right, Kyle, that, you know, there's probably people out there, it's like, what, Commissioner Scarfo, he wants this? Well, we need to get rid of him, term limits.
All right. Well, well, Matt, always, it's always a great conversation.
Yeah.
Thank you, man.
Yeah, thank you, guys. And yeah, squeeze the poop out of the.
Squeeze the poop out of the.
Here's the, so the reason why I said the Trump thing, he made, they, they made an AI video of him in the cockpit of like a fighter jet with a, with a crown on and he literally drives over the, flies over the No King thing and drops on him. And he posted it on his social media.
Man, but AI anymore?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm watching some video and I'm like, I don't know if this is real or it's, this AI thing's scaring me. It's like, we don't need actors anymore. We could just tell.
No, the, the only thing, I mean, there's a series of videos going around where you have, you know, a caribou that's on the sniffing Halloween candy on the front of somebody's porch or, I mean, there's, there's all of these animal and, and it's the only thing that makes you think that it's AI is, is that, would that really happen? You know, I mean, the outrageousness of it.
Yeah, there's some crazy AI.
Well, no, I literally, I forwarded one to one of my buddies and I'm like, can you believe this happened? And he, I don't, he fact checked it somehow. I didn't put it in chat GPT, I don't, I don't do those AI stuff, but and he's like, no, that's way fake.
Yeah.
I'm like, I, it's like, I look like an idiot from sending something to a buddy that's saying, did you see this? And he's like, yeah, that didn't happen. So it's like, remember, it's like, what was it? Believe nothing what you hear and half of what you see? Well, it's not even, it's like ten percent now.
Yeah.
Don't believe anything you see.
No.
It's like.
Nope.
I, anyway, you better wrap this up.
Hey, thank you, man.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
On this day, October twenty-first, nineteen fifteen, the first transatlantic radio telephone message from Arlington, Virginia to Paris. Nineteen seventeen, on this day, the first Americans to see action on the front lines of World War One. U.S. troops enter the front lines at Somervilleier under French command. Nineteen sixty-five, Vivienne Beaumont Theater opens in New York City. Nineteen ninety-one, the, the professor, the hostage, Jesse Turner, the U.S. guy, was released after five years in captivity in Beirut. Two thousand and one, the United We Stand Benefit Concert for September eleventh. The terrorist attack victims is held at RFK Stadium, organized and headlined by Michael Jackson, Aerosmith, Mariah Carey and the Backstreet Boys. Two thousand and nineteen, the world's oldest natural pearl, eight thousand years old, is discovered during excavations at Marawa Island near Abu Dhabi. Twenty twenty-one, actor Alec Baldwin shoots cinematographer Halna Hutchins dead and injures director Joel Sauso with a prop gun during a rehearsal on the film set at the Bonanza Creek Ranch in New Mexico. The number one movie in America on this day in nineteen ninety-five, Get Shorty. And the quote of the day comes from Thomas Edison, when you have exhausted all possibilities, remember this, you haven't. One more time, when you have exhausted all possibilities, remember this, you haven't.
All right.
It's all we got.
Hey, thank you, man.
We'll be back on Thursday, streaming a game on Friday.
Yep.
Not much in between.
Oh, you, you night game football this Saturday.
Yeah, yeah, I said it.
Yeah.
During Sports Report.
Oh, okay, yeah, this Saturday.
So it's C of I, too.
Yeah.
And it's, it's a rival.
Supposed to snow, but.
Yeah.
I mean, snow is better than rain in football.
I'll take, yeah.
I'll take it over rain, I'll do.
I'll take none.
Yeah, me too. I hate it, but I'll take snow over rain, for sure, yeah.
Yeah, Chief Gary Bell will be with us right here on Thursday. So, see you soon.